Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Welcome everybody. It's 6 o'clock. Actually it's close to 7, but really it's 6. And welcome to the public hearing on the Town Plan version of February 4th, 2019. This is the plan that the last public hearing was the one that we're going to deal with. A couple of things. We're going to try, and I say try, to go through this plan chapter by chapter tonight, and try to finish it so that we can keep to our deadlines. We're going to ask everybody to refrain from any kind of comment other than factual comment that you want to see changed. We're not looking for people accusatory, or innuendos, or anything else. This is a serious thing. The Select Board needs for the town to get this plan done. We're on a tight schedule here. We're going to ask everybody who have any comments or changes to the plan, come up and speak, so that you can speak to the audience and we can hear you. The Board has elected that we would like the audiences comment first, if they have any comments on the chapter, and then we will make our comments, and then we can have a dialogue back and forth. And the hope is, is that we can get through this entire plan tonight, and then, the Select Board then will vote and approve if they like the changes, and hopefully we can move forward. If we can't, then we'll have to start scheduling another public hearing, and then I don't think we'll make the timeline. So, there's no sense, you know, let's get to it. Anybody here at the Board want to make any comments? Okay. All right, so, let's start with Chapter 1. We'll do the contents and the cover page first. The first chapter, do we have any comments from the residents here in the audience of what you like or dislike or want to see changed? And that's the introduction. Okay? Do we have any comments from the Board on the introduction?
I thought we were going to go all the way through. You looked down on everything.
No, no, no. After the chapter, we can make our comments.
Are you on the introduction, or are you on Chapter 1?
We're on, well, I guess it's introduction. I guess it's, I mean it's Chapter 1, but it's not. It's introduction. Okay? I note that, as you know, Chapter 12 on the version that was given to the Select Board was not complete. However, Chuck Wise has sent to Bill this morning or this afternoon, a completed version of Chapter 12, that we will be dealing with after the public hearing. There's a caveat here. It hasn't been checked by the Select Board or by Bill, the Town Administrator, but Chuck Wise has indicated that it is correct. So, that's, we're going to go on that assumption. Okay? All right, so, does anybody have, so we're all set on Chapter, on the introduction? Okay? So, the next one is actually Chapter 1, Land Use. Do we have any comments on Chapter 1 Land Use from the residents in the audience? No comment? Do we have any from the Board?
I think so. I'm looking for a place to insert that all forestry activities in town will be, follow the acceptable management practices, which the Select Board talked about at our last meeting. And I thought it might be appropriate to put it on Page 11, on the number, make it a number 4 in goals. All forestry activities will comply with the Vermont Water Quality AMP 2019 Manual for Logging Professionals.
This is the, this is the manual, whoever attended the Select Board meeting on Monday that this was discussed. This is published by the, I guess it's the state? Yep. And it's acceptable, it's all the proper way of doing logging.
One available if anyone wants to look at it.
It's not, it's not just how to do the logging. It also discusses law enforcement if there's a water quality violation. It cites the laws, it cites the penalties. It tells you who the local forestry person out of the Springfield office is that enforces the water quality violations. To me, it makes sense that we just say, in Grafton, we will follow the state law, and instead of us trying to write a ordinance or a policy.
Any comments to that recommendation for change? And so that, we'll all have to vote on these later, so this is, do you want to insert it? Where, Alan?
Well, I think the best place, and it may fit better someplace else, but on Page 11, under goals, I would add a number 4. And it would read, "All forestry activities will comply with Vermont Water Quality AMP 2019 Manual for Logging Professionals."
Yes, I have a question.
Stand up, please.
Stand up?
Yeah.
And why don't you come up here?
I'll come up here, sure.
So, the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I didn't watch it on TV, Fact TV. And so, my understanding is, at that time, the Board voted to go back to the Town?
Yeah, but that's not relative to Chapter 1.
No, no, it's not, but can I just?
No, please not. We need to go follow chapter by chapter and make comments.
Yeah, okay. But I have, I have a comment to make right now about the whole procedure here. So, if, my understanding of the law is, if there are changes made tonight, then, then you have to have another public meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I thought you had said you didn't want to have another public meeting.
We don't want to have, if we can't complete this, and agree on all the changes, then we have to have another public meeting, and then another one after that, and then you will not make the deadline. If we complete this plan tonight, and the Select Board approves the changes to the plan, then we move on, and the clock starts to tick.
Okay. Well, my, the law, as I read it, is that, you know, if the Select Board makes changes tonight, if they adopt changes to the plan, then you have to have another meeting after that.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's because I thought you said.
That is correct.
Okay, so, you said you wanted to be through tonight. All right. Any other comments on Land Use? Yes? Come on up here, please, so we can, or you can stand right there, but just.
Well, you know my voice.
I know, but come on up, so we can all hear you and see you.
Just for clarification, if the changes that you make tonight are not considered substantial or respectable changes, could this be the final meeting? And then my question would be?
I would, you're right if they're not, but I cannot believe that, if there were no substantial changes, yes.
I'm just asking that, and then I've been asked, Al, would you consider your changes?
But you can't approve it tonight anyway.
I understand that. But then I would, would you consider your suggested changes substantial or not?
I don't know. I haven't heard all the changes yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the forestry is a substantial change.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, my understanding that once the Town Plan is approved, it will be, we will be able to amend it through the standard amendment process. The reason I'm asking that question is because I have numerous comments from the original Planning Commission plan, but I don't consider them substantial enough to bring up at this meeting. I would rather bring them up at the amendment meeting.
No, no.
And I just want to.
They have to be brought up tonight.
They have to be brought up tonight.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want a clarification on. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I have one. On Page 8, it talks, and it's referenced in two different places, but the plan says there are three primary access corridors, there are really four. One is for Wyndham. So, I think that needs to be inserted in there. And there's another place where it also talks about it, but, but it says there are three ways to get into town, and that's not true. There are four.
What, where are you on?
Page, Page 8, it says there are, there are three primary access. It's the.
The paragraph above zoning regulations.
Yeah.
See it here. And what do you want to say? Did you guys going to have to make any change? You're going to have to.
Well, we're going to have to say that there are four primary access. Grafton Village 121, Bellas Falls, Point East, Townsend Road, and Wyndham, from the, I guess from the west, yes.
It is 121.
Okay. And then, just the ad from Wyndham?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
I'm trying to write these down, but everybody make some notes, because at the end of the hearing, when we have to approve all of those.
I will have it for the meeting if you, when you need it.
Am I your edit suggestion on that? If you're going to change from 3 to 4?
Stand up, please.
I'm sorry. The suggestion, if you're changing it from 3 to 4, is I'd eliminate the word primary. This was debated on the Planning Commission. We discussed this idea 3 or 4. We set entrances, Wyndham, we didn't consider a primary entrance versus the other three. That's why I said 3 primary. But there are only four entrances, so to say 4 primary, it's a little strange sounding, because there's not a fifth one to choose from, if that makes sense. There are four entrances to Grafton, and that might help clarity if you want to go with the number 4.
I mean, if you want change in language, but there were four ways to get to Grafton, that's all I know.
Right. 4 is fine, just drop primary.
That's my suggestion.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any other changes or recommendations on Chapter 1? Okay, moving right along. Chapter 2, Historic Culture and Natural Resources. Are there any comments?
A question of process. You are going to have to vote as a Board on changes?
Yes.
I would, might recommend you vote chapter by chapter, because otherwise you're going to have to do one vote, and it's going to be yes or no. Is that what you're looking at? I'm just curious the process.
The vote doesn't happen until the meeting.
Yeah, we can't, we can't vote in public hearing.
So, at the meeting, you're going to vote?
Right.
All the changes?
Chapter by chapter, we will vote, yes. With the changes, yes.
Or no.
Corrections. Well, either they'll approve them or not approve them, either one.
But we're going to do the same process.
Yes, the same process at the Board meeting.
We'll do, go through again, and each change, we'll have to vote on each change.
Right.
Chapter by chapter.
Okay.
So, do we have any changes, or any suggestions or changes on Chapter 2, Historic Culture and Natural Resources? Do you have an issue with, please? 22?
13, 14.
No, 7 and 13. I don't have really. Okay, so I guess we'll, if there's nothing there, then we'll move on to the Economy. Sue?
So, Mr. Chair, I have a comment to make about the water section.
Page number, please?
And I'm a little confused, because I can't find it, I can't get my page numbers to that. And on Page 24, there is the number 6, continue to study the water, wastewater quality.
This is on the goals?
And that is, that's in the economy section, right? And then, right, chapter?
Yeah, but, so it would be on the policies, recommendations?
But I don't see the narrative.
Encourage local organizations?
I don't see the narrative in Chapter 3. I had it on Page 25, where it said something like, "The imminent problem of wastewater in the village, best solve the water supply." I just wanted to recommend changing that language a bit.
I don't see that language.
I'm very happy with the number 6. I think that reflective of the work, the Water, Wastewater Committee is doing.
Page 29?
Continue to study water and water.
Oh, okay, but that's, but that's in Roads and Transportation.
It says recommendations for action.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to drop it, because.
No, no, we need to find it.
I'm very comfortable, and I hope, I hope the members of the committee who are here agree with me, that the number 6, as it's stated on Page 24, is reflective of the work we're doing, and is accurate in the document. So, can you leave the way for me?
I don't see the 6 on there.
Yeah, I don't see it at all. That's why I want to make sure that we have the right thing. It's not here.
Recommendations. You're using the July 11 plan. You don't have this plan.
Yeah, that's the Select Board's plan.
Those are, those are recommended.
The page numbers are different?
Yes, whole plan's different.
Oh, darn.
So, it's number, so what number is it under recommendations that you have there, please?
Number 6.
Encourage local organizations?
So, let me try to resolve this problem on my own computer and not waste the Select Board's time, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, do we have any additional comments or any other questions on the Economy, Chapter 3? Okay. We're on Chapter 4, Roads and Transportation. Do we have any comments on Chapter 4, Roads and Transportation?
On Page 29, on number 12.
Of the, okay, 12.
Okay. It talks about maintaining roads, ditches, bridges, et cetera. I'd like to add in, comply with Grafton Town Road and Bridge Standards that were approved 7/18/2019.
Wait one second.
Let me repeat that?
Just one second. You probably look back and go, "Bridge Standards, 7/18/2019."
What's your verb? What's your verb?
Adopted?
Comply with Grafton Road and Bridge Standards, adopted? Or just the date?
Approved.
Approved. Give me the date, Kim, please.
7/18/2019.
Thank you.
And add to the end of that sentence?
That would be fine.
Or you wanted a new?
I think you can just add it to 12 at the end.
Okay, wait one second.
And I have another one?
I would, if I, if I would, if you want to put in, I would add it as a new one, because it's more than just, the road and bridge standards is more than just ditches.
True.
So, make it 15.
Make it number 15.
That's fine.
Okay. So, I got a number 16.
Okay. A new one.
Yep, okay. That we should also comply with a Better Backroads Handbook. That's the solid training in the book that the road foremen's get, that they're supposed to follow.
What do you call that, Alan?
The Better Backroads Handbook. That's where we get a lot of our grants, come through that.
Anything else?
No.
Kevin, you have anything?
I know a lot of these things that come from the state change. I don't just enjoy the wording that says, "We comply with and changes from state on roads and culvert." Maybe there's a bit of wording for it, but.
Well, if you, you have to comply with the new road standards, and you have to comply with whatever the, the handbook is.
If they change the handbook, both of those just put, "And as amended."
Right.
If they change the handbook, then you follow the new handbook.
And also, a road to bridge standard might be amended. It was last 2013 at that year's.
There you go.
I have a recommendation. Recommendation for action, number 2. Says maintain the unpaved sections of Route 121 between Grafton Village and Wyndham as the gravel to reduce desirability development. I'm against that, I'd like to see it strictly. I don't see why we're saving out one single road that in the entire town. Right now, the town of Grafton is struggling for gravel. Gravel is, and if somebody comes along and wants to pave it, or some development comes along up there at some future date and wants to pave it, and Wyndham say no, makes no sense to me at all. It's restricting the town and the government.
So, we'll discuss that in meetings. Okay, with no other comments, we're in energy. Sue?
Mr. Chair, I request your indulgence, because I now have my computer squared away, and I'm on the right version of the plan.
Okay.
And so.
You want to go backwards?
Yes.
What chapter?
So, the version of the plan that has the water language that I would like to make the organization.
Which chapter is that, though?
Is on Page, I mean, Chapter 3, the economy. And it's on Page 26, number 14.
There is one.
It'll be on 27, and your pages.
Explore solutions to potential wastewater problems. And I would like to recommend substituting that language with the language in the July 11 draft, Select Board draft, which reads, "Continue to study water wastewater quality in the village, to continue the good quality of the current water and disposal system and explore future needs, including the economic viability of the village and its solutions if need be. Utilize grants available for such infrastructure necessary to meet basic needs." So, my recommendation is to substitute the language from the July 11 draft with the language in the July 11 draft.
Okay, and what's the number in July 11?
Number 6, Page 24.
Number 6. Number 6, Page 24.
Yes.
Okay. Mike, do you have something else you want to include in Chapter 4? We move back. I don't have it. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. I got nothing substantial in that. 1. Change the. If we can wait this a second. What do we do with 2? Sorry, please.
Yeah, Stan had a fire.
It's two.
Two fires. Bill, can we regress a little bit? What did we do in Chapter 2? What was the recommendations? Or is one second, yeah, when you get a chance? So that Stan can be up to date.
So, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
No, I don't have any.
In Chapter 2?
Yeah, Stan has something, but I don't.
This is our, or you had nothing?
I had nothing. You have something?
Yeah, I got something. It's on Page 16 of Chapter 2, under Forest Resources. I believe this is where it would go. I'd like to insert the acceptable management practices.
We did that.
Oh.
We did it, we did it in Chapter, 1, what was it? Or Chapter 2?
11.
We did it in, Chapter 1, adding the AMPs as a goal as number 4.
Oh, it's a goal, okay. Yep. And then the other one on Page 18 on Chapter 2, under Mineral Resources. I just have a little, that the town should consider purchase of land to secure gravel for roads.
Chapter, what is that?
Page 2. Page 18. And Mineral Resources.
That's a good question. Yes, Nick?
As he spoke that, it sounds like it might better fit in the recommendations. It could well be. Rather than a description. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, where do you want it?
The recommendations are fine.
Okay, please say again.
It says, "Town should consider purchase of land to secure gravel for roads." Now, there may be better ways of doing that, but.
Okay, we can decide when they close.
Yep, that's fine.
Get into the meeting.
As long as we can deal with it.
Okay, you have anything else?
Not under.
Next chapter we're dealing with is energy. Unless you have something you.
I have nothing. I have nothing. Okay.
All right, the next chapter, Energy. Do we have any, anything on the Energy chapter?
I've got 2.
Well, let, let, we've got another.
Okay, absolutely. Perfect.
Do you guys have anything if you want to see changed on the Energy chapter? Thanks, Dan, go ahead.
I do have one.
Well, thanks, yes or no?
The, in the original Town Plan, it said, in the original Planning Commission version, it said we spend $362 million a year on energy as a town, and I wondered how that was possible. Can't hear Dr. Dyrge, though. Can't hear anything.
No, speak up, Alice. Just stand up and speak.
So, on Page 43, Sentence 1, "With total annual energy expenditures in the town of approximately $362 million, there is considerable opportunity for savings from various energy conservation and improved efficiency measures." For a town of 600 people, $362 million seemed like a lot of energy expenditure. Maybe it is that, but it struck me as a high one.
You have something?
In that's in the Planning Commission, like, Page 43?
Yep, personally.
Yeah, 2.36 million. Were all these taken?
Some of it has conservation and efficiency strategies.
Can the Planning Commission address this, where these numbers came from?
Yep.
We're trying to find Page 43, so. You said, which one you talked about?
Conservation.
Conservation and.
Okay, where do you want it?
The recommendation is fine.
Okay, please say again.
It says, "Town should consider purchase of land to secure gravel for roads." Maybe better ways of doing that, but...
Okay, we can decide when they close.
Yep, that's fine.
Get into the... As long as we can deal with it.
Yep.
Okay, you have anything else?
Not under, uh...
Next chapter we're dealing with is energy. Unless you have something you...
I have nothing. Nothing in...
All right, the next chapter, energy. Do we have any, anything on the energy chapter?
I've got two.
Well, let's... We've got another...
Okay, absolutely. Perfect.
Do you guys have anything if you want to see changes on the energy chapter? Thanks, Stan, go ahead. Well, thanks for letting... Yes or no?
The, in the original town plan, it said, in the original plan commission version, it said we spend three hundred sixty-two million dollars a year on energy as a town. And I wondered how that was possible.
Can't hear Dr. Joe though. Can't hear anything.
No, speak up, Alice. Just stand up and speak.
So, on page forty-three, sentence one, "With total annual energy expenditures in the town of approximately three hundred sixty-two million, there is considerable opportunity for savings from various energy conservation and improved efficiency measures." For a town of six hundred people, three hundred sixty-two million seemed like a lot of energy expenditure. Maybe it is that, but it struck me as a high one.
Yes? And that's in the planning commissions. Page forty-three?
Yep, first one.
Yeah, two point three six million. Run all these take...
Some of it has observation and efficiency strategies.
Can the planning commission address this, where these numbers came from?
Yep.
You are two. We're trying to find these forty-three scores. You said which one you talked about.
Conservation.
Conservation and efficiency strategy is the very first sentence in that paragraph. It's the last, last page before the goals, policies, and recommendations in the energy chapter.
The overview of this chapter is probably the best place to start with. There were three pilot towns that worked with the Wyndham Regional Foundation and their resources. They got a big grant and they put all the people together and they wrote their energy plan. All three of those energy plans were virtually identical, word for word, except for a whole bunch of charts and data and so forth. The state then sent to us all three of those, which were word for word, again, about the same, and a massive spreadsheet that had all the data that I, nobody else, so I mean, there's one of those, it's a cut and paste kind of thing that you've got to fill in each chart, create each graph based on our spreadsheet that the state sent us. That number where it came from, right now, I couldn't tell you. Give me a half an hour in the paperwork and I could. My guess is it's transposed wrong from the original data source.
About a half a billion.
And it could be just a decimal point, and I'm not sure.
I have another version of that section, and the number there is two point three six million. And I believe that's the correct number.
That's what the plan says, two point three six million.
No, no, you said...
My answer is three hundred sixty-two million.
No, it's two point...
This says two point three six.
That's good. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, so two point three six is the correct number.
That's the version we have.
It's always different versions.
Do we have any other comments on the energy program?
Thank you.
Ask...
Yeah, I'm sorry, that number seven would need to be looked at. Because here's two point three million. That means each household is spending somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars a year on energy.
No, that, that not so.
I mean, these are, these are the numbers that the planning commission gave us. We have no way to verify it, so...
I do though. I have the spreadsheet and I can go back and ver...
So is that correct?
I can't do it right now unless...
No, but I mean, is that, is that number that each household is spending four hundred thousand dollars on, is that...
It's four thousand.
That's a serious question.
It's four thousand.
Yeah, works out to be four thousand.
Just under four thousand.
All right, well, that's more, that's more reasonable. Any, any other comments on the energy program?
That's actually...
Chapter? You have five, Stan.
All right, I've got, I've got two on that. On, uh... Chapter five, page thirty-four. It's the third paragraph down, it's actually the last sentence. It says, "This vote is a strong indication that Grafton residents are opposed to utility and wind projects." I guess I'd read that. I just don't think it's necessary for it to be in there. It says before that that it was voted down, and I, I just don't feel so it's necessary to have that sentence there.
So you want to remove?
It's a, "The vote is a strong indication that Grafton residents are..." Then on page, the very next page, third paragraph down again. It says, "Again, as previously noted, the town voted against a proposal of a site." That's just a repeat of it before, and I, I just think it's not necessary. It's just a repeat of something.
So you want to strike it out?
I want to strike it out.
Give me that other side, please.
Uh, page thirty-four, I mean thirty-five, like the third paragraph down, right under wind resources.
Okay, that's one I did pick up. Where's the other one?
Okay, it's on page thirty-four, third paragraph down, last sentence in the third paragraph. "This vote is a strong indication that Grafton residents..."
Okay, then that, we must be having imagination. Is there enough, where's, what's the other one? Under what? Oh, there, it's under wind resources?
Yes, on page thirty-five.
And where, what do you want to take out?
Uh, "As previously noted, the town voted against a proposal on the Western Order site."
Can you take out that sentence?
Yeah, I just think it's a repeat of what was said before.
Oh, okay. And I have that at page thirty-six.
We're talking about the same thing. Yeah. Okay.
We've got a hand up here.
Yeah.
Comment? So who stands?
Stand up, please, please, stand up.
Who stands suggestion about striking that sentence? So those, those of you and those of us who have been on the planning commission know that the planning commission spent a lot of time and put a lot of thought into that particular phrase. And it did not just kind of appear there. There was a lot of discussion. And, and the discussion, and the reason why it was felt that this kind of statement should be in there came from the claim that some made that the Ibedrola project vote only implied that the townspeople did not want the Ibedrola project versus that it indicated that the town in general did not wish industrial wind. And, and the planning commission really put a lot of thought into what was the meaning of that vote as far as the town plan is concerned. And, and the town plan has to make a statement to the public utilities commission and to possibly any developer, what the townspeople really think. And this sentence is what the planning commission came up with as a kind of a, um... Yeah, putting, putting in one place the sentiment of what that vote stood for. And so therefore, it would seem to be important to keep that sentence in that is based on, on the townspeople's desires, as expressed by the vote, and the interpretation that led to, uh, industrial wind not being desired by this town. So this, this is a key sentence in, in that way. That's what the public utilities commission would be looking at. What does the town, what does the town desire?
Does not care from the preceding sentence?
No, the, no, the preceding sentence indicates the number of the townspeople voting. The interpretation of what those numbers mean beyond that one particular project. This is where the planning commission, after a lot of thinking, and really a lot of thinking, came to the conclusion that going beyond those numbers for that one particular project vote, this vote indicated that the town overall does not want industrial wind.
So would you mind displaying that on the screen, please? The topic that we're...
What I want to say is that this is more appropriate for when you're going to vote on it?
Yeah.
And we're getting bogged down.
Yeah, so I, we'll take your comment, and we can have this discussion again, Lisa, when we get to this thing.
I can put those back on the screen, but before you leave energy, I'd like to take over. Take over in at... In the energy chapter, the select board added that note at the very beginning of it, that's there, that cites where all this data came from, and that information came from Marion, was it Marion Major? Was she the one that helped with the energy?
She's the one that guided us through it. Um, she understands the spreadsheets and the data sets in that piece, but she's not the one that obviously created the data sets. I don't know if it was A and R, a combination of others that created the data sets.
She wrote this paragraph for the select board because there was no citation of the dat, where the data came from. There was just recite, reciting in your, in the, I ain't gonna explain to you, just recites to, as the data shows, or something like that. And there was no cite. So she prepared this site for the select board. Is that a good thing to put in the beginning of the chapter so people know where the data came from? Or is it not helpful?
I ask them. In my opinion, I'm just a citizen of your party, so...
I don't represent the planning commission. Any improvement clarity, I think is better, sure.
Is there another citation to where the data came from in the plan?
I mean, you're asking me now off the top of my head from a year and a half ago? I honestly can't tell you that. I mean, I can do the research if you direct me to, and I can make, verify all the data sources.
Can anybody, can anybody verify that? Is anything remembered? Yes, Ron?
My recommendation is, in that chapter, there's not really a good set of sources or references, so I think those comment suggestions are important because you need that.
Okay. All right, so Bill, you want to note that?
I would, I would ask that when you consider this, you consider adding this note at the beginning of the energy chapter. So it explains where the data came from.
I, I wouldn't say that I have great respect and faith in Marion Major, a highly intelligent person, very organized, and if she's the one that came up with that, we didn't add extra paragraphs, charts, graphs, data to this chapter. It was a cut and paste from her stuff, and, and so all the data came from her resources. And if she wrote that, that probably covers it all for this chapter.
Okay. Any comments on the energy chapter? I have one, only one, on page forty-six, H. Post no idling signs at the public facilities and businesses. I am absolutely opposed to that. I don't see how it can be regulated. I don't see how you can force the winter foundation, um, the store, or any of the other businesses in town to post stuff on their buildings. And I just want to point out, if you all remember, at the town meeting, there was a proposal to put these speed signs in, and everybody didn't like the speed signs because they said it doesn't, it's not keeping, or it's not in character of a small village. Well, to have these signs posted all over the village is not in character either.
Which page was that?
Excuse me?
Which page?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, H.
Recommendations for action, number four, transportation, the letter H. I have it over on page, at the top of forty-seven.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments on the energy chapter? Okay, right here. Oh, very top.
Oh, that is...
No other comments?
Different age.
Anybody up here? Okay, let's move along to chapter six, education. Any comments from the audience on any changes or anything you don't agree with?
I'm agreeing. You can make a comment if I'm allowed to, and recommend not a change. I'm going to tell you what the story is on this, just so you're clear. This is education. If you're following education, this is changing monthly, and so the narrative is not accurate. I recommend you don't bother changing because it was mentioned, we're going to be starting to go through this, and whatever change you make, by the time you publish it, it's going to change again. So rather than burden you with that, be aware that the, the, the goals and everything else align with what we think are right, but the actual data on the ground changed three times since we wrote it and since we gave it to you in January. So I want to make that clear.
I don't think anybody disagrees. It's just that I think there's something in here that, that needs to be changed or has...
And I have no recommendation for any changes.
Okay.
Well, should we put like a little clarifier at the beginning? Something to...
As written in December two thousand and eighteen, kind of statement, to make it clear.
Right. The education is...
I don't think you can do that. I mean, I, I mean, I could, yes, but it changes, it's going to change again if there's, if, depending on the ruling of the Supreme Court. So I mean, it's going to change every week, maybe, who knows?
And that's our challenge, is to figure out how to write that so it has a, a life more than a month. And I think it can be done, we've got to look at it.
Just so that everybody is aware, the town plan that we are, hopefully can approve tonight, is not a document of the last eight years. It's a living document. It can be changed monthly, weekly, daily. You just got to go through the process, but, so I would hope that the planning commission would review this in a year or two or whenever and say, "Okay, we need to make a recommendation, and then we'll go through the process." It is a living document, so, you know, and obviously, if you pass it tonight, it might change tomorrow. I mean, who knows? Any other thing on the education, I guess not? Okay, the next is chapter seven, housing. Do we have any discussion or changes or recommendations from anybody on the housing? I know. There is, the plan is silent about senior housing. It does not address senior housing at all. Talks about low income, it talks about other things, but it does not talk about senior housing, and I think that needs to be...
The second goal addressed.
Yeah, but I think it should be in the plan where it says, um, there is a section here on actual housing. If you want to put it there, that's okay, but it has to go somewhere, I think, because there is a need for senior housing. Whether it's going to happen in the eyes of the mayor.
What does senior housing mean? If I can ask what it means?
See what senior housing is? People who are in their, you know, I don't know what the age is, sixty, seventies, who are aging population that want to, don't want to downsize. They want to go to a place, but they don't want to go into a nursing home or...
But non-independent living might be a definite...
No, 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 this is, this is independent living.
I mean, not to be tricked, but all of us are in senior housing.
No, 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 I'm not talking, I'm talking actually where the town could, somebody could build two, three, or four units that four people could buy and sell their home and buy them. Not run by any organization. It's not a step program where you, you live and then you need assistance and then you don't need assistance. This is just senior housing that could be constructed in the town. There is a move afoot to look at this. There are some people who are interested in, in looking at some sites, but I think it'd be, it'd be a miss if we didn't have mentioned senior housing in the town plan somewhere. That's my only...
Well, we need verbiage, we can't just have an idea.
Well, then the second sentence touches on that in the introduction, and then...
What page is that?
Two also captures that, but it will be more detailed.
Where is that, Chris?
Uh, right at the beginning of housing, the second sentence. It's a benefit to the town when residents and their children are able to buy and rent a home in town and elderly residents are able to remain in the town if they have families.
That would be, that would be fine with me, as long as we had something there to affect senior housing.
I don't know where you are.
Um, top, the top of the housing bill.
Oh, I'm sorry, say it, Ron.
It's halfway down, halfway down.
Lost, okay.
First paragraph.
Yeah, first paragraph.
Second sentence, last clause.
Yeah.
Okay, and what was, what was your recommendation on that?
Yeah, something about senior housing or something.
Elder residents are able to remain in the town with families. Being with their family, their friends, is that enough?
No, I think it would be a little more stronger than that.
Then put something in recommendation or something.
Well, that's fine with me.
Explore possibilities of constructing senior housing.
That would be good, I would, I could live with that.
So this could be recommendation three.
Yeah, be, be recommendation number three, correct? Are there any other, any other comments on, um, chapter seven? We're up to chapter eight, recreation. Do we have any comments on recreation?
On page fifty-nine is where I have it, and the paragraph begins, "Culture and recreational assets." Um, in the middle of that paragraph, it refers to the White Church. The White Church is, the name has been changed to the Grafton Community Church.
What paragraph are you in, sir?
Last one.
Yeah, but I mean, we can, it's not substantial. Let's see where that is.
At the bottom, right? Is that last paragraph?
Oh, okay, yeah. So it'll be called the Grafton Community Church?
Yes.
Out Grafton or in Grafton?
Grafton Community Church.
But everyone's going to know them as the White Church and the Brick Church, at least in another fifteen years. I mean, I, I understand... I mean, I understand.
Maybe you could put in parentheses, say, White Church.
Okay. That might be helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments or recommendations on Chapter Eight? Town Government and Services, Chapter Nine. Yes? Can't stand up, please?
The second sentence is additional special meetings, as they've called in the past.
Where, where, what page are we on?
You're on sixty-one, right at the beginning, second sentence, additional special meetings. It goes on about chosen by Australian ballot, but other items on the, you have warrant, that should be a warning. Town meeting has warnings, they don't have a line.
Warnings? I'm sorry. Should be warning.
Warning instead of warrant. It's the third line down in the first chapter of the town government.
Oh, on the warning?
Yeah, it's warning, not warrant.
Thank you, Ken.
Do we have any other changes or recommendations on Town Government, Chapter Nine?
I have two. On page sixty-three, first paragraph, it talks about the difficulties, time-consuming training that is required to become an interior qualified firefighter, and somewhere within that paragraph, I would like to see something about, I'm trying to think of how to say this, volunteer fire and rescue potential for future staffing. How can that happen? I mean, fewer and fewer people are stepping up to do this stuff. I'd like to see it state something about how the town is going to address future staffing for both fire and rescue.
How about if we put that into recommendations on sixty-seven?
Sure.
What about other goals?
More goals.
Either through the paragraph or, I just think right now that is, that's really important. If you're going to put it under goals, where do we want it? Under Protective Services?
Yes, I think that's where it should go. Talks about the rescue.
And add number seven under Protective Services and change other to eight, and then, what do you want to say? Something to the effect of look into, it's not good wording, but something to the effect of look into how.
Research.
Research the possibility or fire and rescue potential for future staff. Exactly. Sure. I think it's not, that research solutions for recruitment. Yeah. For future recruitment and staffing. We'll know which means. Yeah. Number seven. Okay, the other one I've got, well, actually, I've got three. On that page sixty-four, fourth paragraph, it does indicate that the Grafton School serves as a certified Red Cross shelter. I don't believe that's accurate.
Yeah, that is not correct.
It says that it will, which serves, they're talking about the Grafton School because of the generator, and that was why the generator was put in. It never got certified as a Red Cross shelter. Okay, I think what we should do is take out the next sentence. Just take out the next sentence. The next sentence. Which is this generator, or you might be. Yeah, okay, yeah. Or just the Grafton School, and then just put a period there. Yeah, that's fine. Just eliminate that. Sure, eliminate that sentence. And then lastly. Oh, I'm sorry, let me see. Just that phrase, addition, is that the school? Then just additionally, that stays. Yeah, that's fine. Just those few words. Wait, sir, it's that certified Red Cross. Right, because I don't think that's accurate.
Any other ones, Ken?
And on page sixty-seven, I believe it's sentence seventeen.
Ensure some year-round access to.
Yeah, I don't think that the town should ensure year-round access to properties is maintained by the owners. I would think recommend that access be maintained by property owners. I don't think that we can ensure, if somebody does want to follow their quarter-mile driveway to their house, I don't think it's a town property. I think you should recommend that it be done, but to ensure that it's done, I'm not sure that you want it. Encourage. Or encourage, recommend or encourage. Ensure, to me, means the town, you're going to go, tell the individual that you got to follow.
Any other changes to?
I got one. Nope. Nope, that's it.
Anything else from, what did you hear? All right, flood resilience, Chapter Ten.
I've got minor changes, but I'm not going to bother.
Do we have any, any changes on Chapter Ten? I think we don't have anything.
I have a, I have a change on sixteen. I'm not sure, I like the insertion of the fluvial erosion hazards areas. I don't like that, I don't like that, what that represents. That's seventy-five, number sixteen. My recommendation would be take that fluvial erosion hazards areas out.
Just fluvial hazards, fluvial erosion hazards out?
Yep.
Just that? Wait a second. So number sixteen, the town will regulate? That's where we are?
Yes.
Oh, take fluvial erosion hazards there, okay.
I do not have any answer to my question, but that looks like one of those very carefully lawyer wordsmith ones, that they wanted all that terminology, and I'm not positive it is or not, but I had never heard the term fluvial erosion until I got on this committee, and there are places they wanted it. So I'm not saying that's not one of those places, and I'll do my best to look into it.
Okay, well, we can deal with that.
Eric? I can check that and see. I think I have that plan here with John Bennett's suggestions, and I can see if he added that back in. Yeah, right here. And that would be, let me just, because this has got different pagination, fluvial resilience sixty-nine, seventy-three.
Joe, would you mind sharing with us why that fluvial erosion hazard, which I don't even know what it means?
It's just another way of regulation, and I don't like it. It's another word that you have to deal with, like this whole river corridors and all this other kind of stuff, and I think it just, just, to me, it's, I think it's too much.
John? Because it says. Okay, John says that should be back in, and you're looking here on the screen, you can see number sixteen, he would, he wanted all that back in in order to meet the fluvial hazard standards. Now, if I can just take a second on it, it says you will regulate it to make sure development does not exacerbate flooding and fluvial erosion. That does not mean you're going to regulate it with the river corridor regulations, it just going to be that you're going to pay attention to it and not allow people to do something that would put themselves in danger.
Well, John Bennett makes recommendations, I agree with him.
He says we had to put it back in.
But I don't, I don't have a problem with it, just take it out.
Put it back in.
Yeah, put it back in. Any other comments on the, on the, on the Chapter of Ten? So now we move to Chapter Eleven, which is Grafton's, Grafton and its neighbors. Do we have any comment on that? No, Chapter Eleven. Nothing?
It should be on page seventy-seven. Your paging is different.
What's on seventy-seven?
Well, that's the beginning of the chapter, that's the way I.
Oh, no, my, my, my chapter starts at, on page seventy-six. So we don't have any, no comments, no changes? Now, brings us to, to Chapter Twelve. Chapter Twelve isn't complete, but we have a so-called unverified, but we were given a completed version of Chapter Twelve by Chuck Wise. It has not been verified, it has not been checked, but he claims that it is accurate. So the select board will have to decide in the meeting whether they want to accept it as it is, and then you'll have a complete plan, assuming that he is accurate.
Or we could say substitute Chuck's version of twelve, pending.
I don't know if you could say pending.
I don't, does that mean, I think of what you do, you take him at his word, he says it's done right. The difference is, if you look at number twelve, in this one, you'll see Town Government Service Chapters, and I'm just pointing this out to you, because I can bring his chapter title up, and it has G one through seven, because it's broken down, the goals are actually broken down, and the goals, all of these are broken down by these various sections. And in his report, they are not broken down by sections, but, let me, let me finish this off first. Under this G, you see how each goal, it starts Town Government Goal One, then it says Finances Goal One, and the Planning Commission's chapter on Government Services, let me get up to it, it continues the numbering through, okay, here it is, you can see it continues the numbering through the goals and so on. So it starts Town Government Goal One, Protected Services is three through six, you guys added a seventh, but three through six, and then Other Services, seven, and the same with the Policies, they're one through eleven and so on. In his Chapter Twelve, and I asked him about this afternoon because he had mentioned it before to me, his Chapter Twelve, under number twelve, when you get to Town Government, you see how it goes, just goes through, he doesn't break it down. That's the only difference in, in his reporting in this fashion. I just want to let you know, when you look at it, you're not going to find the chapter. I don't see that that's a big deal, because it's the whole idea of Chapter Twelve is you want to know where they meant certain goals and policies, and this tells you where you met them.
Okay. Well, we can deal with that.
That's the only difference I've, I've seen in the two.
Yeah, are you okay with Chapter Twelve, the new revisions and stuff?
That at least I can put in and revise somewhere.
No, I'm not okay with it, but yes, I hope you move forward.
You're not okay?
Full disclosure, looking at Mr. Cameron, everybody else, this debacle is on my lap, not the Planning Commission's. You guys saw the email, December eleventh, the Planning Commission, a year ago, approved Chuck's Chapter Twelve. My responsibility was to make that replacement into our master town plan, and I did not. It sat on my laptop, and in doing a forensics, all I can guess is at some point, some other file got saved over it. As you know, I then sent another file, and I guess, I don't even know where that came from, is that something that Bill created over the summer? This file that I have now, that I got via email from Chuck, that you're talking about, I cannot verify tonight, because I've been busy, I just got it this afternoon, while you guys have been talking, I've been sitting there, and I can tell you the first three or four, right? I can't tell you the rest of it right now. So I apologize. That looks like the one we did, but I can't verify it tonight.
So the best of the knowledge, you take it from that. We can put it in.
I'll go with that statement.
And I, and to think, I want to thank the, for that, and if the first four or five were right, it's probably all right.
Okay, now, we've gone through all the chapters, there are two issues, two other places that we had to deal with, and that is the front cover. Any comments on the front cover of Wyndham Foundation Bridge on the town plan?
It's exactly that. I think there should at least be a town property on the front cover of the, of the town plan. Obviously, the bridge that's on there, it's a privately owned bridge. To me, it doesn't matter, when the select board did one, they had a pretty nice picture of the town hall, which certainly works for me, or we do have a, do have a historic cover of a bridge, that that can be on there. But in my mind, as long as it's a properly owned town property, I think it's fine.
So you, so you want to say put the town hall on there?
The picture that's on the other copy is.
So just say town hall, right?
Yeah, the picture of the town hall that was on the select board copy, I think is good for the, for that.
There's another issue here, and that is the Skiplaw report. Any comments on that one? Chuck? I mean, Ken, sorry.
I really think this should be omitted from the whole report. This sounds like a mini novel, based on, no facts involved, there's, it's just basically his personal opinions. He's not even on the Planning Commission. He's not a doctor in these fields, he's got no credentials to these fields. I really think this really needs to be omitted from the town plan.
Any other comments? Lisa?
So at the time when this was prepared, Skiplaw did serve on the Planning Commission, so may that be noted, and he is a wildlife biologist, and he has extensive expertise and knowledge, and the Planning Commission did designate this document as a reference, not as an appendix to the, so it's not officially part of the town plan, so to speak, it's a reference, and it is a valuable document to everybody in town, because it spells out the whole natural resources history and the importance of the natural environment to the development of the town. So the Planning Commission felt that it was a valuable reference, not an official part of the town plan. And it can be available on, you know, we don't print out copies anyway anymore, so And it can be available on, you know, we don't print out copies anyway anymore, so we're not talking about the printing cost of those additional pages. Uh, it can be available online. People can access it. It is very interesting reading. It is designated as his own document. Yes, it does have his opinions, but his name is on it. So it is not the town's, it's not the Planning Commission's. So I, I would strongly suggest that we do not throw it out. It's a valuable document for townspeople, for young people to learn about the natural history.
But does it have to be incorporated into the town plan?
Well, it has not...
If we can make it available...
It is not incorporated into the town plan.
Maybe it is.
It is, well, the, the Planning Commission designated it as a reference, not as an appendix. Originally, it was an appendix. It is no more an appendix.
This is, that should be at the meeting? We're going to have a long discussion in the meeting, but it should be at the meeting.
This is discussion that we'll have to deal with. Heard your comment. Now, are there any other comments about Skip Laught's plan? Ron?
Uh, yes, thank you. For better or worse, I think all 33 plans, town plans, have been given substantial approval by the state. And first of all, several of them, quite a few of them are much, much longer than our plan, including Skip's 10 pages, so that's not a issue. Several of them contain elements that we might agree on or not directly related to a town plan. I agree with Ken. Skip's work is a work of literature, it's a work of really first-rate literature. It happens to be great writing. We're actually fortunate to have something like this as a statement that the town stands behind, and I ask you to keep that in mind. This, you know, it's, it's something that, at a certain level, to me, it's actually beautiful. This is as good a piece of writing as anyone has produced in this town, and I've seen it. We have people in town who write first-rate novels. This is, this is really good work, and it's appropriate in terms of the issues it addresses, what it says about Grafton and its history, its importance, and I ask you to keep that in mind.
Any other comments? Does anybody have any comments on the maps?
I do.
Any, any for the audience first? No, so go ahead.
A little concerned with the map, and it shows it would be the number 14, I think it's numbered, proposed land use. The resource land makes up about two-thirds to three-quarters of the town, according to this. One of the issues I had was the definition of development, and, uh, the answer I got development was pretty much anything. We talk about in the town plan how we want to encourage young people into town. I'm concerned when we draw this green area, that we take away the opportunity for young people to do what Doreen and I did, where we found a little piece of land nobody paid much attention to in Grafton, opened up an old town road, uh, built, lived there for 27 years without power. That was the only way we could live in town. We couldn't move into the center of town. And I have a concern that when we delineate all this green area, we're taking away opportunities for young people. I have a problem with it.
I have a question for the Planning Commission. I, 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 I agree with Alan, but I don't understand the reasoning why certain areas are white and certain areas are not. Can anybody explain that from the Planning Commission? I mean, how was, how has this arrived at, I mean, was just, was there a rhyme or reason of having this green area being so large?
I would do my best to address it, and again, I apologize because a lot of this work is well over a year old. Yes, that map, I would say, is, if not all, virtually all, strictly data collection and transmission, and we tried hard to eliminate any emotional decision-making. Uh, what you'll, what we did was go to the state website that has all the different layers and layers of maps, and we went through our chapter 2 land use, we went through the rules, regulations, laws, et cetera. We also looked at the Wyndham Regional Plan and put all of that together, and we overlaid those maps, and that's what our cartographer did down in Braddeboro. That is the maps that you see that came up with. The terminology is from the Wyndham Res, uh, Wyndham Regional Center, uh, Commission as well, and what they use, so we tried to parallel that. I would say, first of all, to make it clear, it's not zoning. It, it's, it's a vision and a belief system. The maps that you see, the large resource areas, are strictly overlays from the large forest block and, uh, connective corridors maps, and that's what they say is their definition of you, if you will, of what they want to be resource lands. Not critical resource lands, resource lands. There's a difference. Critical resource lands, again, not zoning. I'm a believer, if anybody knows me, I'm one that says your land, your rights guy. Critical resource lands are like the Turner area that says, by everything, we as a community strongly believe we don't want you messing with that. Resource lands are, we want you to understand that this is a beautiful fragile area and be careful when you do it. We recommend that you don't go nuts on it. Now, now, that's layman's terms versus what you see there, but that was the message we tried to send in this.
In this area...
Can you point to the, up there, because I can't see what you point to there?
Well, in the green area.
Green area, yep.
And in the western end of town. There's a couple people that have built houses that have long driveways. If this plan was in place at the time, would they still be allowed to build a long driveway to those properties?
Absolutely. No question.
Okay.
Then the ones I have problems with is pink. When you designate those state lands and, and the writing says that there's no development or no building, I forget which term you used. I don't, I don't think in a Dillon State where the town is given jurisdiction by state law, there's no way that we as a town can tell the state what they can do on state lands.
A really important and interesting point, what I was visualizing is what we had to control to say yes and no to, and we have zero control over that land, and that's why we put it in that category. But I see your point from that view.
Right.
It's the same vision, a different approach.
Correct. But I, I understand your thinking, but I also understand what's happening in Londonderry where the, when they're trying to, uh, develop, uh, Low Lake State Park because of a town plan. The two are not jiving, and to me, for the town to take jurisdiction on state land is wrong.
Ron, I think that needs to be addressed by the, by the board. Okay, are there any other comments before we adjourn the public hearing?
So I have a comment on, I suspect to...
Laura, you need to give us the...
Bill has never told me I need to speak. Okay. I was so focused on the maps that I now lost my place. But on the appendix for list of historic sites, and it also ties back to, I believe, page 13 under Historic Resources, um, this information is out of date. Back in January, when we were first making comments on the Planning Commission version of the plan, I researched this with the State of Vermont Historic and the National Historic Register. Anyway, to make a long story short, um, this section and the section that has a narrative about it, um, under Historic Resources, it just simply needs to be updated, and I have a narrative that I would like to propose, um, and I'll just send it on to Bill in an email if that would...
We need to do it tonight.
If you want to do it tonight.
I can do it.
Okay, now send it to...
If you want to make a change, we need to do it tonight.
Okay.
Send it to...
I'm going to, yeah.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what you, would, do you, can you tell us what you have in mind?
Yes, of course.
All right.
So I...
13?
So it, the, the fact is, it's page 13, but I'm also referencing it in the appendix area. There were originally just these few historic structures that were listed in the National Historic Register. The Congregational Church, the Chapel, the Kitterhill Bridge, Mill Dean, and Eagle Brook. But since then, several, 11 historic buildings and districts have been, have been added to the National Register, and those are, include the Grafton Schoolhouse, Butterfield House, Post Office, Park Farm, Middletown Rural Mechanics Building, and Grafton Historic Districts. So this has quite a bit of information in it. Also, the Vermont State Register includes over 100 historic sites, and all these sites are listed as part of the Grafton Historical District. So, um, also, finally, I think that the, um, the narrative on the, uh, Grafton Congregational Church and the Brick Meeting House that is being beautifully restored, um, the, uh, comment there should, I would recommend, say, the architecturally significant Grafton Congregational Church, Brick Meeting House, has been structurally stabilized through the efforts of the Grafton Historical Society, and, uh, I believe that's the correct rubric. You might want to, uh, modify that as well. Beautiful interior restorations are underway. They may actually be complete by now, and the Congregational Church Chapel has been partly renovated and stabilized by the Grafton Community Church. So I just thought, and many volunteers, so I just thought I would extend along this narrative, and then it would include...
Okay, but you're going to, just do it this way, because I can't get an email here.
Okay.
And then, and where will this narrative go?
So if you wanted to use it in the narrative, it would go on page...
If you look up here, are we, that's where, somewhere in there you want?
It would go in appendix, which is the topic we were on now, and it would go under Historic Resources, which I believe is on page 13.
I don't, where, where in, in, on page 13 would it go?
We, the Grafton Historic...
It includes, it says the Vermont State Register Historic Sites includes over 100 historic sites within Grafton.
So I, I, if you choose not to, to accept my recommendation, I understand that.
Well, we need...
I, I want to, I want to just, uh...
Well, we need, for you, is the recommendation.
I'm going to put it on his flash drive right now.
But it, but is that something that, rather than making it a substantive change, is that something that the Planning Commission, when they get to that part, can? I, to me, there's a lot of little things like that in there, like it says about the sheep being in town. I didn't even go there. There are no more sheep in town. So, I mean, as you go through that, uh, as they go through this thing, once they get it back, those are the corrections that can be made then, as opposed to, I mean, there's many details...
Sam, while you were out fighting fire, I asked that very much.
I should be...
And I was selected, I, I was asked by the Select Board to go ahead and make my one-hedge comments.
Sorry. I did, I'm sorry.
So, um, that, that's the only reason. I really have these small, smaller matters tonight.
Did you put it on there? We can discuss that. It might be easier just to, just to cut paper, so it's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Then we can, we can deal with it in a meeting.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to the town and to the Select Board, um, I don't get to say, because I'm one member of the Planning Commission, but I get to write agendas, so maybe I can have some direction on this. My personal goal and expectation is that starting next Tuesday, which is our next Planning Commission meeting, even though this is not adopted officially, is a sequential process, month by month, by going through this. Next week, honestly, is, I want to start with defining what is a goal, what is a recommendation, is what is a policy, because those are strange and a major problem to me. That needs to be defined before we go forward, and then, starting in December meeting, I've got it, a calendar laid out, one chapter per month, all the way through. It's 12 chapters, one year, so sometime late winter, early spring 2021, my goal would be have an amendment in going through this process again, a year and a couple of months away. And that is what I see happening next. I just want to say that.
Okay. That's, that's what it should be.
And I'm sorry if you covered this before I got here. There was some questions I had today, the table of contents referencing the appendices. There's appendices referenced in the text that are not there. Is that, has that covered? And then the other thing that we might want to consider is, we don't really have any citations for our data sources, so when a new batch of people in five years looks at this and they wonder where some of these numbers and figures and facts came from, if we could have, like, the $2.36 million in energy, if we had a, a data source citation for that, so we can always go look it up, where exactly all those facts and figures came from.
Thank you. That data source is what I was talking about. That's what we're going to add to the...
We're going to add a data source to the plan. I think, I mean, the board agrees.
I think it's really important.
Okay. Any other comments before we adjourn the public hearing? Do we need a motion to adjourn, Bill? No, yes.
No, you just closed the hearing.
So when we close the hearing, we'll make a motion and start a Select Board meeting.
Second?
Discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I guess the way we should do this is the same way we did the public hearing. We'll start with chapter 1 and go through it, then go through the cover, and then we'll go through the appendix and the maps and whatever. So, Bill, you'll have to help us here.
I highlighted all of them in yellow, so I, I know where the changes are.
Okay, so I guess the first one is chapter 1. And we inserted...
Page J.
Yeah.
Page J, we changed from 3 to 4, struck the prime date.
Page J, we, what do we do here now?
We, we changed 3 to 4, and we struck the word primary.
On page J.
On page J, yep. It's a paragraph...
We're zoning regulation.
Yep, I see.
Right, yeah.
So there are four access corridors. Correct.
Uh, do we want, do you want to go through the formal process of making a, making a motion?
I would do by chapter. If that's the only thing in this chapter, then...
Okay, all right. So is that the only thing on chapter 1?
No.
Okay, what's the other one?
Uh, page, page 11, um, Goals, is where I added...
Oh, that's right.
Forestry activities.
So which one is that, 4? It would be 4.
Would be goal number 4.
That's the management practices.
Right, yeah, so everybody knows this is the hook that we're being in, right here, this one.
Correct. Should that be a policy more than goal? Policies, double policy.
It probably should be a policy.
You're probably right. It should probably be a policy.
Just make it number 8, yeah, under policy.
So, yeah, it should be a policy. It's something we should...
And we will have to, we will have to form a policy that says that.
Right?
No.
Yeah, we will. In our policy.
Oh, in the policy, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, you get that, Bill?
Well, now you change your policy.
It's the same wording, except we're going to move it from, move it away from, it's not going to be 4 under goals, it's going to be 8 under policies.
Just a, just a small change.
The wording doesn't change.
The wording doesn't change. Just a comment we were waiting. Anybody who does logging on their property and their logger doesn't follow this, and there's an issue, the homeowner is, could be liable. So if anybody plans on doing any logging on any property they have, they should make sure that their logger or forester uses that as their guide. It's a very important part of the process. Okay. Okay, we got that? Are there any other changes in chapter one, menus?
No.
No, that's chapter one. Okay, so somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the changes.
No, make a motion to amend chapter one with those changes.
That's what I meant to say. And now we know the ways. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the amending chapter one as the motion says?
Now, wait a second. Okay, changes to, to, and to four entrances? I just want to be clear. And policy on A and Bs?
Correct.
Policy number?
Eight.
Eight. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, chapter two, historical, cultural...
Who said it then?
Chris did.
I did.
Chris did.
Thank you.
Historical, cultural, and natural resources.
Yeah. Page 20, page 21. Page 21, we had number 13 under recommendations. Town should consider land with gravel for roads.
That's just one.
Purchase.
Right, purchase.
On what, 21? Why is that 18? Yeah, I put that up, page 18.
Yeah.
Yes, you're right.
Go ahead. Wait a minute. That worked. Should be under mineral resources.
Yeah. Oh, page 22. I have a recommendation 15 on page 22. Might be 21 on here. That's what we're talking about, Stan.
The other mineral resources, thank you.
Was that going to go under recommendation? I guess it was.
It was recommendation.
15.
It's supposed to act.
Recommendations for action.
Correct. So it'd be number 15.
Yep, that's right.
Page 22. That's the only one in that chapter.
Is that the only one?
Yep.
Does that, do you have anything on that? Is that accuracy on chapter two? Okay.
Yep.
All right, so somebody want to make a motion to accept the changes to chapter two?
I'll make that one.
Recommendation to amend, to amend chapter two, add, under recommendation, 15, purchase land to secure gravel for road. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of changing the, adopting the changes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, adopted. Now, our chapter three. Chapters three, we had on page 26, under 14, to continue the language from July 11th, number six, page 24, was my note.
Well, what it was, was, in Bill's, on the July 11th one, Bill had written about the Water Committee. And so we want that language out of July 11th, inserted here.
All right, so on the board now, we're now on, this is...
Chapter three.
This is Suzanne's recommendation.
Yeah. Could use language from the July 11th.
It's a funny, continue to study the water.
That was 15?
Delete 14 and add 14.
Say that again.
It's big, it's, it's that on the screen. It is delete 14 that is there, explore solutions, and add, continue to study water, wastewater quality, and ability to continue to get quality, et cetera, from the, from the select board's plan, language in the select board.
That's the only one in that chapter. All right, somebody make a motion to accept the change?
Make a motion, we accept.
Add, amend.
The amendment, the amendment, please.
Adopt the amendment, chapter three.
Oh, second.
I'm going to write adopt the amendment, whether, whether...
You're right. Well, you're supposed to be able to interpret.
Okay, thanks. Now...
Do we have a second?
Second.
I understand.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion? If there is none, all in favor of making the change to study the wastewater, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we're on four. We have some changes here.
Page 29, we added a 12 to comply with Grafton Town Road Bridge and Bridge Standards as adopted seven, 18, 2019.
And as amended.
And as amended.
Correct.
Because it will change.
Correct.
Are you talking about recommendations? You added a 12. There's no 11.
No, under policies?
Under policies.
Policies is 14.
Modifying 12, or adding 12.
Okay.
Well, actually, actually, what we did...
We better modify 12, we had 15.
No, no. What we did was added a new 15.
Right.
That's the new 15.
Correct.
And then you add a new 16.
That's correct.
Okay.
Which is comply with better roads.
Better road roads.
And as amended.
Right. Okay. Do you understand that, Sam? You weren't here for the...
No, I didn't hear you.
But it's a good idea, because we had those things, and that's what we go by.
Yep. Oh, yeah, better back roads.
That's where we get our money. Okay, I think totally, only two changes I have noted on my copy. Are there any others?
Oh, yeah. You did.
Oh, under policies.
You wanted to, that part about...
That's not...
No, that's not the one.
Sorry, wrong place.
I don't have...
Wrong place. Remember, you had an issue with not paving.
Right, but it's not, it's not...
I thought that was...
I, I would move that we adopt the amendments in chapter four.
Okay.
The addition of about 15 and 16 under policies.
Any further discussion?
Oh, wait a second. You recommended under recommendation number two, maintaining unpaid sections of Route 121, as gravel to reduce the...
Oh, you're right, that is it. That's where it is. I have another thing. You're right.
You want to strike it?
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to take it out. So you have to make a new motion, Chris, if you want to change...
Okay, so, I move we adopt the amendments in chapter four, adding policies 14 and 15 that we comply with the Town Road Bridges Standards, and as well as the better back roads, and then delete the current recommendation two as far as maintaining 121 unpaid.
Actually, those are 15 and 16.
The lawyers, 15, 16.
15 and 16, I stand corrected, thank you.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? If not, say all in favor of accepting the three recommendations to chapter four. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Chapter five, any issue? There was...
Anne's, page 34.
On page 30, actually, I had a note that we were going to add, was it Martha Majors?
Marion Major.
Marion Major.
Yes.
We were going to add her, recognize that the data came from her.
Yeah, you have that language, Bill?
Aye. It's the note in the, it's the note in the select board's version that comes from Marion Major's. It's the very beginning of the energy chapter, and it says, no, the data comes from...
This is what it says here. Note that all the data cited in the energy chapter is provided by the Wyndham Regional Commission staff, which obtained the base data from various sources. And it goes on to talk about the whole thing. Is that the one you want to add?
Yeah, I wanted to add it.
The whole note?
Add the whole note and add it right before introduction.
Well, that's where it is. It's, oh, right before, this is, in select board's version, it was after introduction.
Yeah, formatting, I may add it there.
It'll be, it'll set, it'll just be set, just like this and there, it's just set out. No, it's a note.
Correct. Yep. Okay. Yeah, it is, it is the first thing, but it says no.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody understand that language?
The next thing I have is on page 34. And it says, this vote is a strong indication of Grafton residents are opposed to utility scale wind projects. I don't think that sentence should be in there.
Right. That was Stan's motion.
Yeah.
Okay. And there was another one, too, Stan, somewhere.
Well, I was, no, that's, yeah, that was the...
The next, yeah. We're on page 35, under Wind Resources, also, as previously noted, town voted against, proposed, and Western Board, whatever. The, I wrote the article, and the article was very specific to that Stiles book project, and I have a problem taking that and interpreting it to mean something else.
Yeah, I also...
Somebody want to do it?
I think I, I would delete that sentence.
Yeah, that's one.
And, and I want to, I want to address Lisa's comment about the vote indicating a strong, I, I think it indicates that on the number eight, with a vote of 235, no, and 158, four, that indicates it's a very strong vote, and I don't think you need anything else other than that.
Yeah. Well, may I, so, the, the crux of this statement is in that following sentence. What does, what does it actually mean? Okay, so we had that vote, but what is the meaning of that vote? Why is it important, and how does it inform the town plan and the town's energy policy? And that was a long discussion among planning commissioners and people who attended meetings, at many meetings, there was discussion about what that vote means. Does it just mean that that particular project was voted down, or does it have a significant meaning as, as far as how the town overall feels on industrial wind? And the planning commission came down with the last, that, that you can conclude from that vote, not just that the Iberdrola project was rejected overwhelmingly, but that that rejection of that project indicates that the town has rejected industrial wind. This went back and forth, and that's where the planning commission came down, and anonymously, anonymously, unanimously adopted this statement. And this is a crux statement. This is what the planning, the Public Utilities Commission would be looking for. So you had a vote, so what does that mean about any other project? That's the second sentence that says it. So I, I really feel that it's very important that the town is clear.
Okay. The, the selectmen recognized that this was an issue, so we went to VLCT and asked for their opinion, and VLCT's opinion was, the vote was for the wind project only, it wasn't for wind for the town. It was a specific vote for a specific policy. So that's what, that's what VLCT commented on, that we asked for interpretation of what the language said, because there's been controversy is that we did take a vote, and we were against wind, the town was against the wind. No, the town was against the Iberdrola wind project. And that's what VLCT had indicated, that that's what it means.
But there's nowhere else, any other data, there's no data that supports the fact that the town does not want industrial wind. The, the data from that vote is what the policy is based on.
Lisa, 235 to 158, that's a pretty substantial number.
Right, and therefore, that indicates that the town does not want industrial wind, not just that particular 2016 Iberdrola project vote, and...
All right, okay, that's your opinion. Okay. What other changes do we have on this chapter other than...
Mr. Chair, is a hand raised by...
Yeah, one second. Before, before we do that, we, we want to, let's make sure we get all the changes here before we vote.
I wanted to...
Okay, you, we have a hand up.
There was the error on top of page 43, the 362 million dollar.
Well, actually, it's right. It's 36, is that?
It's 2.36 million.
2.36.
But some copies have 362 million.
What's that? Yeah, 2.36.
On the top of...
43, on Conservation and Efficiency Strategies, the first sentence, just wanted to make sure the number is correct.
I have 2.36.
Right.
Right. I, I have...
My copy says 362 million.
Wow. Yeah, my copy says 2.36, so it needs to be 2.36.
This is the one, this, this one right here is...
So that's not an amendment, then?
The final by a commission draft that was, that's posted on the website, which is what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, as long as it reads 2.36.
That's the one. So that's not an amendment.
No, it's not.
Okay, and I think that's, I think, hold on a minute.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's no island.
On 46.
Yeah, no island.
So you suggested that that...
That we strike it.
Strike, strike that. So if that gets struck, then the I will become H.
That is correct. All right, so, so for the record, we have four changes, amendments. We have two on the wind, one on the, one on the vote, two on the vote, we have one on the no island sites, and what's the other one?
Well, there's really only three, because the other thing we talked about.
All right, same. So then we have three. We have the, the two issues on the vote. One is to strike the, the strong indication out, and what's the other one?
Previously noted.
Previously noted. And the other one is to eliminate the use of no island sites.
Correct.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, yeah, I, there's a...
Sure, I'm sorry.
I just want to offer this as maybe an alternative way of addressing the issue that Stan brought up, and that's to remove the word strong, that's a bit of a piling on. It's an indication, but the rest of that sentence makes clear that when people voted, they didn't say, oh, because the Iberdrola is proposing this, I guess. There were, you know, years of meetings and information... meetings and information brought up, they had to deal with the U.S. wind in general, okay, wind power budget in general, so that sentence plays an important role in letting everyone know what actually happened and why, and so, you know, take out the word strong, just leave it as a declarative sentence.
Your point won't take it.
So I would suggest that we consider that as a.
Billy, you have a.
I agree. Why don't you just put in the words they voted on? This article was voted, voted down, voted.
Put the article.
Yeah.
Put the article, actually.
The article and say, in November, Sunday, this article was voted on, and it was, or was it defeated or what, it voted.
It was defeated.
It was defeated, two hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and fifty-eight, just put, just quote the thing, and then let everybody decide whether it was.
That's.
It's already in there, on November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, with a vote of one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and fifty-eight, the town voted against the proposal.
What proposal?
Well, it says a twenty.
You're voted on an article.
Yeah.
And the article stated, stated something, put the article, this article is what they voted on, and, and it was.
Yeah, but if the article is, is, is forever, you can, you can go research the article, so you can get all the history, but you go back, rather than a proposal. A proposal might not be, but Bill's correct, I believe, but if you change it to article, then if somebody is interested, you have an article that you.
Vote the article.
Yeah, right.
And, and, and the article will tell you when you voted.
Correct, yep.
I agree.
So, what about the vote as a strong indication of Grafton residents?
Take, take that sentence out and put in the actual article.
No, it isn't, if, if you, it, it isn't an industrial wind article, the article says you're voting for against this project, that's what the article says, so I would say, just put the article.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And then, then there, then everybody can make up their mind what they voted for.
And interpret it however they want.
Yeah, against wind or against the article, against the project.
I guess I'm a little dense. So you're talking about eliminating that entire, the wind energy has been controversial on the.
No.
No, neither is.
Leave everything in there, except to say that, who voted twenty-five to two, turn down the article that stated. Put the article.
Put the article number in there, or.
No, not the article.
Give me actual wording.
Vote the article.
Quote the article in there, right, yep, okay. I like that, I think that's better.
Well, it's very clear.
Yeah, because then.
People can interpret it however they want.
Exactly. All right, so we have a motion on the vote, we didn't have a motion, did we? No, we have no motion.
Yeah.
So, to, so to understand, we're going to eliminate the vote as strong indication of Grafton being opposed, and we're gonna add the article, the actual article in its place.
Actual, the actual wording of the article.
Okay, so that's number one. Number two is the island signs.
Well, actually, number two is on the next one, page thirty-five, previously noted.
Right.
Got that.
That comes out too.
Yep.
Okay, so we have three amendments to the chap, the energy chapter. Somebody wanna make a motion as such, so we can discuss it and vote on?
We have four.
Four?
One, the note.
For the island sign, no, island, the.
Island.
The vote.
The vote, the language.
The vote is a new one, yes.
The note.
Right, yep, okay. So, somebody wanna make a motion?
Is everybody clear what they're voting on?
What's the note?
Sorry?
The note at the beginning.
The note is the.
Oh, right, the source, I forgot about that.
No, no, okay, thank you. Right. So we have the note, we have the, the changes to the, to the, we need to add the article, the warrant, yeah, the article, and.
You mentioned in the other language, add the no island.
The no island signs.
Okay, everybody clear what you're voting on?
Okay, we're, Stan, we're eliminating, we're adding the note, this, that's.
Yes, I understand, I understand that.
We're eliminating the vote as strong indication of Grafton, that's out.
Okay, that's out.
And we're going to put the actual article in.
Okay.
Whatever that terminology of the article.
Okay, so that's fine.
Right, okay.
And then?
And then on the other one, we're gonna take the Ibadrola thing out.
As previously noted?
Yes, right?
Right.
But then it's five, right, then you want your island sign.
Yeah, it's, it's four.
Well, you're making it five, because you're adding.
We're just assuming.
We're just rewording.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so everybody clear now, what, what, what we have, so, and somebody wanna make a motion to that effect? Then we can discuss it.
Make their motion.
Okay, so the motion is that we, we amend the plan to add the note.
Yep.
We add to, to, to take out the vote as a strong indication, and replace that with the actual warrant, that article.
Correct.
And we take the description of the Ibadrola project out, and we, we take, we eliminate the no island requirement.
Correct, correct.
Okay, if you say Ibadrola, you're taking out, as previously noted.
Yeah, right, that's the one, yeah.
Right.
All right, so somebody wanna make a motion to that effect?
We did.
Second?
Second.
Now we can have discussion. Does everybody agree with that? Anybody wanna make some changes? Speak up.
Does the island affect the sign that's in front of the town, town hall, would that come down?
There's no sign.
Oh, that's, please, he can see.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no sign.
Town, I know.
Okay, so where does this come from?
Maybe something there at one time, or it may have been during Irene, when there's so many trucks coming up in there.
I remember seeing, yeah.
But I remember there was something.
It was temporary.
It was, yeah.
May?
No, as far as I know, there was no sign. Unless somebody put one in between now and yesterday.
Sir Garrett.
So if there's, if there's no question, all in favor of the, the four amendments to the energy chapter, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, moving along, the next chapter is.
Education.
Yeah, education.
Which is a little bit targeted.
Yeah, and remember, Bill, that we, we make sure that, that the two point three six million is the actual one in there.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was no changes in education, correct?
Right.
Right.
Uh, chapter eight, chapter six, sorry, go on, need to. And then we have the housing, the only one, I think.
On page thirty, fifty-eight, on page fifty-eight, we added, a recommendation for action was to explore senior housing.
Right, definitely changed.
But I have that.
Number three.
Language is, number three, explore possibilities of constructing senior housing in Grafton.
Yes, that's, that's it.
Is that on the goal, or?
No.
A recommendation, recommendations.
Number three, yep.
Yep.
There were no other changes, so somebody wanna make a motion to make that, make that amendment to some other chapter? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Who made the motion?
Alan.
Alan and Kathy seconded. Okay, so the next chapter is recreation, I don't, there was, the only change there was the white, called the, the Graffton Village Church, rather than the white church, or, then somebody made the mo, made the suggestion that we put white church in parentheses?
Yeah, right, we retain white church, which is.
Graffton Community Church.
The current name, which is a Graffton Community Church.
And what makes it a?
Fifty-nine.
Recreation.
Last paragraph.
You don't wanna take that, right?
Hmm?
No. It might be on sixty. I thought I would take that, on fifty-nine, might be.
I'm on fifty-nine.
What, what's the?
Culture and recreational assets at Grafton includes.
One way museum, educational nature museum.
Kind of odd that that is called, the title is recreation, and we're talking about church.
Oh, I got, um, okay.
Let, let, let me tell her when he gets.
I put a Graffton Community Church, and when you, you put white church in.
Dave Coleridge.
Can, can we make some kind of note there, draw it to attention? Culture and recreational assets, that's all under recreation, culture, shouldn't have?
Chapter two is cultural resources.
That, that seems like that's in the wrong chapter.
Because it's about the musical program there, and I think that relates to culture, the white, the Graffton Community Church, Grand White Church, noted for its final.
All right, I'm fine. Yeah, so. Okay, so do we have a motion to make the, that?
So I move we adopt the, the amendment in, um, chapter eight for recreation to modify the.
Alan seconded.
The name of the church.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor of making that change, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Sixty-one.
The next is town government.
Yeah, change the rate in that first paragraph, third sentence, change the warrant to warnings.
Right, and then, then there was another one on the red cross thing, right?
Page sixty-four.
There's one on sixty-three, too. Or, no, that was under the recommended.
Sixty-four is, I just highlighted the sentence, this generator.
We were gonna.
The Grafton School.
We're gonna delete which serves as a red cross shelter.
Right.
Because that's no longer accurate.
Okay.
Well, I got a key to town voters two thousand and seven on the purchase of the generator.
Yeah.
To be used during emergencies.
Yeah, because it's okay, and then this generator is at, is.
Well, just leave that whole sentence in there, that the town voted two thousand and seven to purchase the generator to be used during emergency, this generator is at the Grafton Elementary School.
Yeah, right, that's, that's it, period, yep.
Period.
And then you take out which, sorry.
Take out that last part, right.
And then you can go, initially by agreement to the foundation.
At some point we can put that out.
Yeah, okay. Provided for the, the town will get provided for the home to generate. And the town garage already has there. Okay, that's the only change, I think, uh, no.
Policies, number seventeen.
Well, even before that.
We were gonna add a number seven.
Even before that, on sixty-six, on page sixty-six, protective services, add seven, research recruitment potential.
Is that right?
Language.
Right.
Research solutions for future recruitment.
Of both fire and, and rescue.
Yeah, then the other one was.
Seventeen, on page sixty-seven.
Seventeen, recommend instead of ensure.
I have encourage.
Encourage, that's fine.
And then, that's it. Okay, hang on a second.
Encourage your own access to properties is maintain.
So I move we adopt amendment, uh, chapter nine, the four changes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Since there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Flood resiliency, on page seventy-five, well, we took it out, and we put it back.
There's nothing in the, that plan, I don't think there's any other changes in there, is there?
I didn't highlight anything.
No, we took that one.
Took it out, and then we put it back.
All right, so that brings us to chapter twelve.
No, eleven.
Eleven. There was nothing in eleven.
Nothing.
The other thing that I could have on ten, uh, chapter ten, on page seventy, um, was, if I can find the page, on the very first, under flood resiliency background, I did mention this before, but it's, I was thinking it's something that could be changed, is flood resiliency is the ability to adapt to changing conditions, be prepared to withstand and recover from disruptions due to emergencies. We're talking about flooding, uh, due to flooding emergencies, or is just emergencies plain enough there?
What's, what, okay, I don't have your case. You're at the very beginning of.
Very beginning of flood resiliency, the very first sentence. It says disruptions due to emergencies, I mean, we're talking about flooding, should that be flooding emergencies? Because emergencies could be a house burning down, somebody get hit by a car.
Car could go.
Dog got lost.
Uh, no, it could be anything, but, because you could have, not likely, but you could have landslides, you could have, uh, earthquakes, which we don't have, but you could have it, that would all cause a problem with the flow of water.
Okay, so that's why I didn't bring it up initially, I just thought, I mean, we were talking about flooding, and then it said due to emergencies, so.
I think it's better if we, you know, gentlemen.
Okay.
There are no changes on chapter eleven. So the next thing is chapter twelve, we need to.
Yes, we're gonna take.
Chuck Wies' word.
Yeah, we need to, Chuck Wies' version is number twelve. Somebody make a motion to that effect?
Second.
Second? Alan seconded, Kathy amended, I'm, I'm, we made the motion, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that brings us to, now, it brings us to the front cover, we did the front cover? No, we didn't, we're gonna do the front cover and the beavers. So let's do the front cover first. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, and we accept the cover that is on the Select Board's, um, edition of the plan, is it?
Town Hall.
Picture of the town hall, to be the picture of the town plan.
Okay, we, Alan, Stan made the motion, Alan seconded, so any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the last one of the actual plan is the beavers, is Skip Lyles. I think it's a good article.
I do.
But I think it should be in the town, um, website, it should be printed, it should be put someplace, but I don't think it belongs in the town plan, that's my view.
I'll make that one.
Could, could it not be just a reference?
You could reference, in the, you can certainly reference this, in the plan, say reference Skip Lyles' report, but not include the report in.
Right.
Oh, absolutely, I think it's.
Yeah, references, reference it, if something that's on the website, you can tell it was on the website.
We have chapter two, which is natural resources, that might be a logical place to consider the references.
That's okay, yeah.
Okay, let's say exactly where you wanna do it, if you can do that.
So, chapter two.
I mean, it could be at.
Historic, cultural and natural.
It could be at the very end of the chapter, it's always, when the document is, it's included there.
No, it would just be a reference, and it'll go into town plan, town website.
Yeah.
So if somebody reads it and they wanna reference it, you can, you can reference it that it's on the town, the town website.
Makes sense to go on natural resources.
Available in the town hall.
Yeah.
Well, there is a thing on page eighteen, already, see natural resources by Skip Lyles to learn more about natural benefit functions treated, created by beaver habitat in Grafton.
Well, then we could add there, and is it on, is it on, is it planned on the town website?
Where are you looking?
It is.
On page eighteen.
It's a footnote.
It's a footnote, number ten. It says, see natural resources by Skip Lyles.
Are you looking at the planning system?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay, yeah, and we can, just add the, the website.
It is available at.
Yeah, right.
Excuse me, could you correct the spelling on Lyles?
Oh, yeah.
It's L-I-S-L-E.
It's L-I-S-L-E?
I didn't take that one right. Spell it again.
Does somebody wanna make a motion that we, that we reference it? Footnote? That should make that a change.
I'll second it.
All right. Discussion?
And Resources Chapter.
It's a footnote already, Bill. Just gotta add the town website to it, yeah.
Check it out.
That's no problem.
Spell isn't it right?
Yeah, and change the.
I haven't changed it.
Okay. Okay.
Now, okay, the motion is to add that to the footnote, but take it out of the.
Yes.
Yeah, remove the report.
From the plan.
Who made the motion?
Kathy made the motion, I think.
I don't have any.
Kathy made the motion, Dan seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I think it's right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the last thing we had to deal tonight before we adjourn is the maps. And the only map that I have a question is, is the one that's up there on this resource map. And I, I understand, Dave Culver, that you can't restrict it, but I just, I just don't have the understanding of why. I mean, I live in the white area, Spring Hill, and you couldn't build anything in Spring Hill unless you decide you wanna put cliffside houses up there. But there are places in Hopkiville or other places, and Halville, that you can build. I just don't understand why that's like that. That's my, much of my trouble that I have with that.
Well, hopefully maybe future references can, can change that maybe more accurately than something.
Well, I still don't understand how it happened.
That would have to go back to the planning commission.
Well, I think it's important that, if, if the map was created because of technologies and layers, et cetera, et cetera, is one thing. But if it was, if it was developed, the map was created to make a statement, that's our intent. I have a problem with that. I mean, to show a corridor that starts in the village for animals to travel from the village out towards W.C. Putnam, so why, why are they starting there? It's just that, I just have a problem with that.
So what do we wanna do with it?
I don't know how to resolve it.
I think we just resolve it.
Should we go to another map that can replace that, that's similar? Why?
Could we delete this for now and during the amendment process add a corrected copy perhaps?
I don't know technically, technically you can do it.
I don't know what you're asking. If you're asking, how do you handle this benign?
Yeah.
You, you see the area that's in white in the north, what, east corner?
Yeah.
All right? If you think parts, and you can do it by where the roads are, say, we want to change to white the area that is south of Hall Ranch, west, east of Stage Och, all the way to Chester Road, for instance. I don't know what you wanna change, but if there is a way of doing it that is specific, if you guys astronomically thought it, and then the map maker will have to change it according to that. We won't have the map printed. We might have it, we should have it for the, the next hearing, but at least people understand what, what you're proposing to change when you go to the next meeting. But that, that is a way to do it.
I just, so that sounds to me like you're throwing a dart at us.
Well, the argument is what is now the productive rural area, which is all of Fisher Hill, and Anderson Road, and everything all the way up to Chester. Is that any different from the hills?
It's not.
Looks like Chester around one side and productive rural.
If you feel it's not, then, then that's, I'm just giving you a way to word it that would be clear what your motion means. That's all I'm saying. I did not suggest any change in it. But if you want to, that's what you do.
It's like, you look at all the houses along Stage Road. All those houses on Stage Road.
Why isn't that one?
Well, look at Old East Road. You've got, had this property up there, you've got, you've got four houses up there, plus certainly developed land up there. I mean, I, I, you know, and I, I say what Chris is saying, how come one side of thirty-five is okay and the other side isn't?
You know, perhaps just like how, if you go to, I believe it'll be page twelve on the plan, because I just have a property that combined the plans here. Under Grafton's Resource Lands, there's a description of the resource lands and the intent. And it's clear that development is acceptable. So if development is to occur, steps should be taken to ensure that the development will not negatively affect the floodway and the water flow, which is a rather minimal set of restrictions.
Which number are you looking at, five?
I'm looking on their page, my page twelve.
Yeah.
But what's the number?
The chapter?
It's chapter on the land use.
But what's the, what's the number on, on page twelve?
It's not a number, the title of that section is Grafton's Resource Lands. It's where there's a description.
You have a different one than I did.
That's what they mean.
Page eleven.
I'm sorry. I'm talking here from my page numbers.
If you go, at the beginning of the, of Land Use, there's one page, so you don't have to worry about page numbers. Then there's a multicolor scale, going from undeveloped to heavily developed. Right below that, there are those definitions of those areas that are right there on the map. So if you look at your maps, you look at those areas, you can see what you're talking about.
So if we, if we go there, okay, below that, uh.
We don't know what colors they are, no.
Figure, uh, resource lands and productive.
You don't know what's in there?
No.
Maps?
No, I have no maps.
No, it's not a map.
Well, there's no colors here either. This is all just black and white, so I don't know what they're referring.
No, no, I'm referring to the map. Just hang on, put the map back up. So you got that in front of you?
No.
No, you got that in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the second page in on the chapter on Land Use.
They have that, they don't have the map.
Okay.
And they don't have a color map, so it's this map right here.
So at least under the description of what resources, resource lands are.
Here's the legend at the bottom.
It says, it says a future development will occur. And then if you move two pages further on, and still the Land Use chapter, there's a description on Grafton's Resource Lands.
Yep.
And so what it says, the last sentence, development is to occur, so it's not significant development. Steps should be taken to ensure that the development will not negatively affect the floodway and water flow. If we take those statements and then go to the map, purchase that map is to generalize land, the land use map. And you would never put specific little changes or, you know, in the coding here and there in such a map. The resource lands have been described in the Land Use chapter, and it makes clear that that area green can have potential development. So you don't have the problem.
Well, it does, it does say, future development should be weighed against the desire to preserve the area.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's not, that is not allowing open development.
No, to restrict.
It says because you're, you're smack dab in the middle of the resource area.
Well, you just may have to do something different if you build your house. You just may have to be a little bit more careful with what you do, maybe. They're not saying that you can't do it, right?
Okay, but what's, but what is the, then, what is the difference between the up white area, which is productive rural land that doesn't have that description?
Right.
And, and the green area, when you're talking about the areas, areas on both sides of Route thirty-five?
Because the white area is not being described as being productive.
Exactly, no, that's my point. That, that's why they need to look at this and decide, do they want both sides of thirty-five to be different? Or do they want both sides of thirty-five to be the same? That's what I'm saying, and that's the way you can do it. Okay, like, that's all I was pointing out.
I, I just have a problem with it, and I don't know how to resolve it, but I just, I, I, I think, yeah, okay.
If you actually look at the title of that map, it sounds like the Planning Commission is trying to tell us what we can do with those lands. I think this map just needs to be deleted completely. Don't argue about it. If you actually look at its title, Proposed Land, I mean, it's like they're telling us, well, this is what they want. And we were just told during the previous meeting that this was produced by overlays of different things. So this isn't really a Planning Commission map? This is a map that was just sort of thrown together? So I honestly do think this map should just be eliminated.
Is this a required element?
Well, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have those descriptions via a map, but you can change the map so that you, then you agree with what fits the description. That's, but, but you can't eliminate, you can eliminate it, but then your descriptions in your chapter mean nothing.
Mean nothing.
There's no meaning. There's no backup.
No, you have to have a map, but how do we change the map?
I told you how, Joe. You just say, I don't, I want this to be white, it's gonna be green, and you describe it and I'll put it in the notes and you guys hold on. I mean, that's how you do it.
But Bill, isn't that, that is a process for doing it? But is it the best process for the Select Board to enter into tonight? Wouldn't it be prudent to do, since there's all this discussion and questions about it?
Well, I think it should have been more discussed at the public hearing.
Or could we just say that up in this section about land use, the map for proposed land use will be taken under consideration by the Planning Commission or by the Select Board? I mean, I think that's very similar to what Chris was saying, I probably didn't say it as well. But it just, doesn't seem to me that at eight thirty-five at night, after we've gone through an entire approval process for a town plan, that the Select Board should be rewriting the map. It just doesn't seem prudent to me if it's fine.
Well, that was my suggestion also, that it goes back to the Planning Commission, that they can relook at it and somehow. I don't argue the fact that it's maybe right or not right, but I just think it's one of the future processes that, that has to be reviewed more.
I, I just have a problem when eventually something goes to Act two fifty, and in Act two fifty hearing, they're looking at this map, and they're gonna make a decision in Act two fifty based on the colors that are on this map.
Take the map out and say the map will be underdeveloped.
So I do believe to Chris's earlier question that this map is a required element. As you know, the Wyndham Regional Commission, which has to approve this plan, is requiring the plan to include certain things such as this kind of a map. So it might make sense just to let go the map now, let it, let it be as it is, with the understanding that this is an aspirational suggested map. This is not a zoning map, and this is not a restricted map. And, and then Planning Commission in this process can take it up, they can take it up maybe sooner than some of the other chapters, if the Select Board considers it an urgent matter, and then come up with an amended map. But not hold up our whole town plan approval process because of interpretations of what this map means.
I don't think anybody's trying to hold the plan up. I just have, I, I have an issue. I don't have a problem with the map, I have a problem with the colors of the map.
Well, the, the, all the definitions, they are suggestions only. Development is allowed, but care should be taken, no development in floodway. It is only suggestions. There's, there's nothing restrictive about this map. This map is not gonna stand in anybody's way who wants to start some kind of a house building or whatever in, in, in those areas.
I disagree.
And this map is required now. It cannot be thrown out of, of the plan. The Wyndham Regional Commission will need to look at this map.
I, I understand that. The question is, I understand you have to have the map. I understand it's a requirement, but the requirement doesn't have to be this map, it can be changed.
Well, then you can go, go, go ahead and change it, but the question is, when do you change it? Do you change it this week or next month?
When I read the note that's on the map, in the second sentence, it is intended to be used in concert with the plan's policies to articulate the desire, future of the town. That's a pretty strong statement. And, and I, I just know when things get to Act two fifty, that's enough for some lawyer to, to make a case. I don't want something built here, and it shouldn't be built here because it's green, you know? That's how it works. This document will, will wind up in an Act two fifty hearing, and somebody will or won't get a permit because of what colors are on this map.
It's not, it's already marked.
Well, it might as well be.
Well, one thing is clear.
I got a question.
There are two different aspirations for this map.
I'd just like to support Stan's proposal that we send this map back to be looked at more carefully, approved at night. What I'm thinking of is that what's makes sense is to ask the Planning Commission to look carefully at the boundaries of the colors. So in certain areas, it should be on both sides, one twenty-one, thirty-five, and so on, where it's not shown up in the map. So we're asking them to be more precise. Dave's comment sounded like they've just taken the overlays and what they could download from the Wyndham Regional Commission. But that may not be precise about the town. I agree with that one, that. What I worry about is putting little pockets here and there, trying to do that, but that's not the purpose of the general Land Use Act. So I would go with Stan's, send it back to the Planning Commission, ask them to look at this very carefully, be more precise. We might even suggest that that's the first thing they do.
That's what I'm gonna sent you.
But how do, but how do we do that? Because once we approve the plan, then there's no directive to do that.
Well, you can certainly add any statement you want to what you're doing tonight, not to your approval process, but what you're asking the Planning Commission to do. It's easy enough to be, it doesn't have, doesn't have to be what you're doing in terms of approving the various chapters of the map, which are also adding suggestions that they do this in a certain order. Because Dave has said this, that's what he can introduce, go through this. And this is the first thing, because I, I agree. And if you look at it carefully, I myself would suggest moving boundaries a bit, actually, I feel that way.
Okay.
Well, I, well, likely saying that since the Planning Commission had no real part in this map, how can they actually go and tell me, 'cause I'm looking at my property, and some of my property's in white and a lot of it's in the green? How are they going to know, the Planning Commission, what part of my property is whatever? You know, I have a flat hilltop. Right now it's in green. So what gives the Planning Commission the knowledge to go around changing this particular map as they had no? What I'm trying to say is, are they qualified to change this?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't, I don't think we should stay here for the next three hours trying to figure this out. What I'd like to be able to have is some language that's, that's added to, was somewhere in this plan, that we, that directs the Planning Commission to, to take a look at this thing ASAP, and hold their public hearing on it, and whatever. So that, because I'm, I have a fear that once this gets approved, it's gonna go in the, in the closet and nothing's gonna happen about it. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't, not that I don't trust it, I just, I just don't, I have a problem with it. Yes, Bill, you had something?
The, you can instruct, at the end of this meeting, you can instruct the Planning Commission to do things. And one of those things could be that. And the other thing could be to redo, they're gonna have to redo the report. And I think you should strongly suggest to them on the report, that saying, this is a perfect example, saying that land use change has been affected with this plan. And to actually do a real report as required by forty-three eighty-four, I can see, I do a real report stating exactly what changes were made and where in town, just like, just like it's required of them. And not simply state there aren't any changes, because it's pretty obvious there are changes. And the attorneys had suggested that. It is part of our problem in going through this whole discussion about this town plan, was it that the report was misleading because it said there was no change, when there are. was that the report was misleading because it said there was no change, when there obviously are changes. And that, and that the select board can require a valid report that addresses those issues as the law requires, instead of just saying there isn't any, because if, if there aren't any changes, you don't have to do the rest of the report. That's absolutely true. That's what the law says. But the law, forty-three eighty-four, requires them to do certain things if the, if there are changes. I think I have forty-three, I do have forty-three.
Well, if, if we can, if we can accomplish that, I'm okay.
But I think, I think you need to do it, Larry Penny, so you, she suggested that, that you, all this in yellow is what they should do, and that, and it's based on if the proposal would alter the designation of any land area, the report should cover the following points. And it goes into the minimal tax base, the need for public facilities, amount of vacant land, which is, which is already subject to the proposed, the actual available for the purpose, and needed to, and so on. So that is what you should ask them to do, strongly asked to do, for the next meeting, so that we have a, a good report.
I'll make a motion to do it each time.
Okay, I, I, I second that.
Okay, then, okay, the motion would be to follow forty-three eighty-four C. Okay, forty-three eighty-four C.
I go with that. I can live with that.
So, just that I understand what...
Well, but you're, and you want to then, and to look at the maps, is that part of it?
Yeah, yes. Look at this, the resource map.
Look at map fourteen.
So, um, do we need to assign?
We have a motion.
Well, I second that. Okay, we, we can discuss it in a minute. So now, question. So with this motion, we are preparing to send the plan back to the planning commission?
No, they have to write a report.
We're just asked, okay.
I did, that's why I'm asking for clarification when it's about to happen.
So we're asking them to write an up-to-date or a corrected report based on these changes. And to rela, and look at the map. And to look at the map and understand why they're, you know, why I understand them. Okay, so if...
Just wait, wait one second. I'll answer your question in a second. But if they change the map, then that's another change?
Well, it would be a change, they're gonna be changed anyway to this plan, so at least, at least they're working on the change. Then you can, then you can have a public hearing, you can have a discussion about the map, and a map would change on the plan.
May I add, since it, since this discussion has indicated that there are obviously two different visions of what the public land, proposed land use ought to be, could you just say in the notes section, would a compromise be, say in the notes section, this proposed land use map is under development?
But there's other issues here, because they, they're supposed to, they're supposed to give us a report.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody ever received the Wyndham County, the Wyndham Town Plan. Eric sent me a copy. And they have a, they have a, in their, in their report, they have a sheet of paper there that points out all the differences in the plan. What was changed, what needed to be changed, or whatever. We never got that.
Okay.
And that's what the attorney is, is saying to us, is that they never gave us that full report of what the real changes mean. So let them do that, let them also work on the map, and bring it back to the select board, but let this plan go forward.
Okay, forty-three eighty-five B, second paragraph, the second sentence, "The planning commission shall submit to the legislative body at or prior to the public hearing a report that analyzes the extent to which the changed proposal, when taken together with the rest of the plan, is consistent with the legislative goals established in forty-three oh-two." That is, if, if, if you guys change what you have, then they have to write a new, a new...
Report.
New report, and, and then that report, that, that, this is regarding that they write the report. That report is in forty-three eighty-four C, and it's all this stuff in there that's part of the map.
So, does that have to happen before we can adopt the plan?
No. Well, it has to happen if they follow the law. It has to happen before, you have to have it before it goes to that hearing, which is, which I've been suggesting that you can now make, make December twelfth your, your next hearing, because you've got to give thirty days' notice to all the towns around us.
So the planning commission has thirty days to get their report to us.
Get their report to you. The sooner the better, but they have thirty days.
Yeah, and, and then they, they need to work on the map.
Uh, I'm not saying they need to work on the map for that meeting, and, meeting, because if they work on the map for the meeting and come with a changed map, that meeting on the twelfth...
No, 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 not for that meeting, not for that meeting, but then that's their first order of...
A separate action is, you want them to work on the chapter, on the number fourteen map.
Before they do anything else.
Yes, right. Okay, that is a separate thing.
Okay, so if we can have that motion...
I have, Stan and Phil, you have the motion.
We have the motion. We made that motion.
Read the motion again, please.
Is that, that the planning commission give you a forty-three eighty-four C report with all the details required by C, and that, that they make one of their first businesses to work on the, on map number fourteen, which is the future land use map.
The only thing I would add is that they, that report by...
A due date?
They had a due date.
I don't know that you can order a map, but I can, we can put it in there, but if, they have to have it before the...
Well, just a second. They have to have it before the twelfth. Put that in there.
This is getting a little nitpicky, I know.
Of, of December. Now, I wanna, that's another thing I wanted you guys, it's two things I wanted you to do before you end this meeting.
Okay, one, one, that has to be done before...
That has to be done before December twelfth. That has to be done. Not as part of this process, but make as one of your first jobs as a planning commission is to look at this map and get back, and, and amended, or work on this map. I don't know what you want them to do. You want them to work on the map on the number fourteen. That is a separate thing, not dealing with the, like, because if you do it with that plan, you guys have just blown off all...
No, no, we don't want to do that. I kind of feel that if we approve the plan with the map as it is, and we ask them to change the map, it's sort of like a blank check. It's like, I want to see what the map looks like before I approve it.
You're not appro, you're approving the map that's right there, right here, right now.
You have no choice. You have to approve this, otherwise you're going to...
I, I like Suzanne's suggestion, though, just modifying the commentary on, on the map.
Why couldn't you do that? I mean, the note, I'm, I'm just trying to strike a...
But we, we have a motion on the floor, so let's deal with the motion, and we can, we want to add something else, we can do that.
Okay.
But the motion is, is they have to write the report by the thirteenth, the twelfth, whatever the date is, and before the twelfth. Before the twelfth.
We want to be able to read the report before the meeting, correct?
Well, you, you would hope so.
All you can do, require them, is meet the law. I can't tell them to give it to you tomorrow, when the law says they have to have it after the meeting.
And we want to instruct them that their first order of business is to look at this map and make revisions, or explain to us why the things were done. That's the motion.
Okay, explain, explain why the colors.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the motion. Okay, so let's call the question. I think we had enough discussion on it, so we can move on, and then we can deal with, maybe put the footnote someplace as well as that. So, so all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's done. Okay, so now Suzanne, what is your, what is your recommendation?
So my, my thought is, take, look at the note that's part of the map.
Yeah, I say I don't have a note on mine, but that's okay.
Okay, there's a note, and it says, "This proposed land use map is a part of the town plan, expressing the vision of the plan in general terms." That vision has been in question in this discussion. It's not everybody's aspiration, what these colors are. So why don't you just delete that part? Say something like, it's already in, in here, which is, um, "This map is for planning purposes and general reference only," or "This proposed land use map is under development," or this is, or just delete the note completely. Then you've just got a map with some colors on it, and really very difficult to understand, notwithstanding the explanations in the, in the description, what these colors mean. But I think this note represents a point of view, but not all of the points of view about this map.
I agree.
So could you just delete the note?
If you delete the note, then you have the map, and it presume that the map is affected. So if you're not gonna, if you, if you put a note that you don't want the map to be what it appears to be, then you gotta say what, what you want it to be.
Yeah, I, I, I like the first part of yours better, if the map is for, I, I don't remember exactly, but...
Well, if you, if you just use the last sentence, "This plan is for planning purposes in general reference only."
That's it. That's all, that's all.
Does that, does that allow us flexibility at a future point in time after December twelfth for the planning commission to look at this map?
Yeah, because we're... Augmented any time.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've indicated that they need to go in there and, and look at the map.
Would that, would that help you, Al?
Helps me. It helps, but I just still struggle with the idea that somehow Stage Road, with houses along Stage Road, is different than Fisher Hill.
Right. Are you gonna resell it or not?
No. So we need to find a way to move on, otherwise we'll be here until midnight, and we have a deadline to make, and if we don't make the deadline, then we don't want to have a town plan, so... No.
We didn't, we didn't vote on it.
No, you voted on...
Yeah, we voted on that.
Dan voted on, neither have made a motion nor did anything with regard to the note.
No, the note. So so we make a motion for the note, or we just forget about it and move on. I'd like Suzanne to make an addition, that it's for planning purposes only, whatever the language you have there.
What I have, delete all the note except for the last sentence, which says, "This map is for planning purposes and general reference only."
Right. I can live with that. So anyone make that motion? Kathy, Stan? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. All right, Bill.
If you say no, no.
Alan said no, I'm sorry. Bill, before we adjourn, you said you wanted to do something else?
I want you to set, uh, yeah, I want you to, at the end of this meeting, I want you to recess until Friday morning.
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock, to look at all the changes I made, to make sure that they're the changes you want, so that you, that then vote to approve that plan as amended tonight.
Right.
Okay, and then, secondly, I want you to, uh, establish, or you can do that, eh, establish the twelfth of December as the next hearing date. And that will give us, the reason for that, it will give us thirty days' notice to circulate the plan to the neighboring towns, and them a chance to comment, and before that, December twelfth meeting. Now, the, the timeline, and we can discuss the timeline now if you would like. The timeline, even if it goes to us during ballot, the timeline can be met if on the twelfth, you don't make any changes to what you have done tonight, so if there's anybody out there, anybody here wants to make any changes to what you did tonight, make it tonight, because if you make it on the twelfth, you're not gonna make January fifteenth deadline.
I don't have any changes. I don't know about, but I think...
If anybody has anything, they need to do it tonight.
Yeah, I think today is the day.
Okay, so that's, it's over. So we're gonna be done, that's what happened. So I just need you to, uh, either now or on Friday, pick the next hearing date, which is...
Well, why don't we sit on Friday, once we see the, the finished document?
That's fine.
Okay, but we need to adjourn, we need a motion to adjourn this, this recess meeting to, um, Friday, nine AM at the town hall. So, okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ron, you had a last...
I came a few minutes late, but once we're aboard to the January fifteenth deadline?
If it's not, if it's not included, if it's not approved, in a year after the final planning commission hearing, by law, it is, it is rejected by the town and it goes away.
Thank you.
By law.
I believe the planning commission here was January thirty-first.
No, it was Jan, it was, the hearing was January fifteenth. You then had a meeting on January thirty-first at which you made motions. Then you had a meeting on February forty-first, at which you made motions to pass it on to the select board. But the, the hearing, and the law says, the planning commission's hearing, January fifteen. The law says hearing.
I think you'll critical change depending on what happens at the special...